Imena 36, Natalie Hesaton-Guahan is back in session. Welcome back, colleagues. We are continuing on the second reading file, and we are on Bill Number 36-36COR. Senator St. Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill Number 36-36 as substituted by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture under the third reading file and to discuss the bill, sponsored by myself.
Please proceed.
Buenos, Madam Speaker, and my dear colleagues. I'm pleased to be here alongside you today for session and appreciate our opportunity to speak on Bill 36-36, which is an act to authorize a commercial submerged land license between the Governor Guam and TeleGuam Holdings LLC, doing business as GTA, for the purpose of landing submarine cable at Alupang tumuling Guam. After quite some time, I am appreciative that the bill has been reported out for consideration. GTA, our homegrown and hometown telecommunications provider, came to me nearly 11 months ago to introduce legislation critically needed for essentially essential infrastructure to serve our residents, businesses, and government to enhance the present and future demands of economic growth to our island. Not many of us think about submarine cables and what they mean for our island. They are necessary to keep us, our people, and our island connected to the world. Out of the 11 submarine cable systems presently on island, five of them are at their shelf life. Of those five, three of them are nearing ending of life and will be retired and decommissioned in the next few years. The submarine cable system which GTA is seeking to construct and install are to replace those aging systems. Having adopted greater use of technology and telecommunications for nearly the past year and a half, being forced to virtually communicate with one another, all of us should have a greater appreciation as to what infrastructure is required to enable that. When I was approached by GTA executives to assist and look at this legislation and how it benefits the entire community, the private investment, approximately at 40 million, is in partnership with our local government insofar as licensing and leasing the submerged lands where the new cable system will traverse. As chairman for the Appropriation Committee, I see how this measure will yield new revenues for our government in the way of licensing and annual payments and taxes. It's a win-win for the community. I appreciate the Speaker making amendments to the original bill concerning the evaluation of the submerged land to ensure the revenues derived from the licensing and leasing mirror what a comparable U.S. jurisdiction generates for placement of the infrastructure. Now that all parties have come to agreement on this, any new submerged license or renewed license, C and lease agreement will have this formula and calculus to consider going forward. The language further provides for annual escalation clauses to generate more. This will mean more revenue for CLTC, that's Tomorrowland Trust Commission, Survey, and Infrastructure Fund, and more developed CLTC property available for our people, not to mention having vital telecommunications infrastructure capacity in place to serve them and the island. All telecom providers interested in undertaking the same kind of project will have to follow the same lease and license formula. Nothing precludes any other telecom from seeking to do the same as GTA is pursuing via this bill. GTA had tried to pursue a commercial agreement with CLTC nearly 20 months ago. However, the CLTC informed GTA that they had not completed their commercial rules and regulations and was unable to enter into any long-term agreement greater than five years. Once CLTC finalized such commercial rules, it will be able to proceed forward. While we authorize this submerged agreement for GTA, it will have to clear all local and federal environmental regimes, rules, and regulations to ensure it is ego-friendly. Reminder, they have to pass all the checks to be sure that they're able to operate. GTA will have to do this to secure permits. The amended language provides this and ensures that all recreational activity above the 10-foot-wide corridor where the cables will be buried remain available to fishermen and other recreational activities. Nobody will see the cables. They will be buried several feet below the seabed. There's still a long way to go for GTA to proceed forth once the permitting is granted. There will be a need for terrestrial clearance, and I'm glad we've been able to move on to this since. It's been 20 months since which GTA has striven to get moving on this project. Specialized subcable manufacturers have to be contracted with specialized vessels. To lay the cables have to be scheduled. That's a long timeframe, up to two years. Once completed, it'll be right at the point in time when a couple of existing subcables are decommissioned. Let's keep Guam connected by passing Bill 36. And thank you, colleagues, and thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On Bill Number 36-36, is there any senator who would like to be recognized? Senator Taitugui, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, and to my colleagues, good afternoon. Madam Speaker, this is a almost completely 360-degree turn with regards to the amendments that were made to this legislation from the previous bill that was written. And I find it very important that there were a lot of things that were addressed in these amendments that were placed in this bill while it was in the committee. Huge concerns. Also, Madam Speaker, I'd like to ask the author of the legislation if there was an updated fiscal note provided for this particular change, the substituted bill. Or, yeah, it's been substituted. So if there's been a updated fiscal note?
Madam Speaker, I'll yield to the question and just give the answer of no.
Then may I ask if there will be a fiscal note? Was there a request for an additional fiscal note for the substituted bill? Or just there was no request for it? Okay. Madam Speaker, in the 35th Guam legislature, I introduced legislation that we created, which is now called Public Law 35-132, which created a task force regarding submarine cables, fiber optic cables and landing stations to come on Guam. Madam Speaker, there's never been any real guidelines or regulations regarding the cost or what needs to be regulated when it comes to fiber optic cables coming into Guam. You know, Guam is key. It's a key area because fiber optic telecommunications hub for the Pacific, and there's several reasons. Trans-Pacific submarine cable networks in the North Pacific are prone to this type of activity. And for this reason, Guam is a natural selection, you know, for companies to land submarine cables here. Additionally, Guam is in a United States territory with built-in structures. Maintaining submarine cables to Guam is a redundant measure to remain connected to the U.S. as well as Asia. Guam's infrastructure is stable enough to support fiber optic telecommunications. And that's why Guam is so ideal to land the cables here because of that, because of rules and regulations, because it's stable. It's a U.S. territory. The island of Guam has a total of 11 submarine cables landing on Guam with an additional two cables projected to ready for service by the quarter of 2019. Unfortunately, because of COVID, things have delayed it a bit. Currently, eight of the 11 cables are terminated at cable landing stations on Guam. Guam is the bridging point for the remaining three cables. There's so much other information, Madam Speaker, when it comes to fiber optic cables in the Pacific. Regarding U.S. territories, Madam Speaker, the Virgin Islands, Puerto Rico, for an example, and Virgin Islands, places like, although it's not a U.S. territory, but Micronesian Islands, and then American Samoa. In Puerto Rico has approximately nine major submarine cable landings on the island. But there is nothing significant to report regarding potential tax revenue. The U.S. Virgin Islands has approximately seven submarine cable landings on the island. But there is nothing significant to report when it calls to potential tax revenues. The Micronesian Islands, FSM Palau, et cetera, and American Samoa each have only one submarine cable providing service to the island. There is nothing significant to report regarding potential revenues as well, tax revenues. Madam Speaker, we have the opportunity now, which I think should have been done when we put into a contract with Tomorrowland Trust and the PD submarine cable landing station. I don't know if my colleagues have a copy of that contract, but if you look at that contract, it states that it's only about $5,000 a month, $60,000 a year, between $55,000 to $60,000 a year. That's it. And how many fiber cables are coming in? According to the public hearing, Madam Speaker, in PD, there's about six. And this is very important when we talk about the measure on this substituted version. Very important. Because, Madam Speaker, the substituted version not only asks for $100,000 when it comes to the fee, the licensing fee, which I need to verify with legal to ensure that this licensing fee cannot be retracted back in the event they don't go forward with the contract. But this is a fee at the very beginning. The terms on this, Madam Speaker, on the first cable system, landing fee is $100,000. And if there is another cable that to go in the same conduit, which can be up to six, each cable is $100,000 per year. That's substantially different from what was passed in a contract between PD, Tomorrowland Trust, and GTA. I think it was something that was rushed without realizing the revenues that can be generated and how these multimillion to billion-dollar companies utilizing our island for their cables. One of the greatest things about fiber optic cables and what sells mostly is speed. When a cable for certain amount of distance, miles and miles, thousands of miles of distance, it slows down the speed. When it lands on an island or an area, it doesn't have to be an island, a continent, or landing station, it's rejuvenated and shot out faster to wherever these lines are going. Of course, with Guam, it goes out to the Asian area, Singapore, Japan, Philippines. And they rejuvenate. Guam is the perfect location for that, especially when it comes from the U.S. to Asia, connecting with Asia. We are sitting on prime property when it comes to fiber optic cables. And if you look at the history of fiber optic cables and you look at the map, Madam Speaker, I don't know if my colleagues were able to obtain the same map during the public hearing. And I, sorry, wish I brought it to the audiovisual so they can put it on. There are tons of cables coming in through Guam, and it's not going to stop. Telecommunications is growing, hence at the speed of light. But Madam Speaker, I'm very, very pleased at this piece of legislation in front of us because it addresses many of the concerns that we've had, and especially the amount of money that we were charging for charging these companies that literally, if I'm not mistaken, charge a million-plus to those companies to land on Guam. With six cables, that's $6 million-plus. And here, we're only asking per cable $100,000. I think it's more than fair. Madam Speaker, the concern I do have in this legislation, though, is the end of the contract. I know there's, I think it's 25 years, if I'm not mistaken, and then allow for renewal. But my concern, Madam Speaker, is if they do not or decide not to renew it, then who's responsible for the equipment, the cable equipment left over? Is there something in this legislation that says, okay, if GTA no longer wants to use this landing area in Alupang after so many years, is there something in the legislation that requires them to basically take these fiber optic cables and the conduits and take it out and restore back to its original state as much as possible? So, Madam Speaker, I have an amendment to make here, and if you allow me a few minutes to work with legal on it, I'd like to incorporate this type of language that at the end of, for an example, Madam Speaker, if you remember the public hearing, there is the same kind of situation down at Gun Beach. And there's this cemented type of piping from Gun Beach out to the reef. And that was left over from another project. Is it something that could be left in the ground, that the reef and the coral, you know, attach to it and grow on top of it? I'm not sure. But if you could just give me a few minutes, Madam Speaker, I'd like to talk to legal about the amendment and also the author of the legislation.
Senator, St. Augustine, would you, I mean,
Well, I just want to make--
Does you have a point of order?
Just a point of information, Madam Speaker, is that I think the area she's talking about is something that used to be the U.S. Cable Line, underlines cable, and then that was turned over to Australian. And now that's, if I'm correct, and I'm not for sure, that's going to be taken over by AT&amp;T. And as soon as if this bill passes, this will become the formula they would have to use. It's still working right now, the one in Gun Beach you're talking about. I'm familiar with that because I'm from Dindu. So I'm not sure exactly who has it, but there are two other companies that are getting ready to start going through this process. So this becomes a template, just for information purposes.
Thank you for the point of information, Senator. Senator Taitugui--
Yes, also, Madam Speaker, since, you know, at this time, I'm also looking at the, an amendment in here to ensure that-- Now, Lupang, I live on that beach area, and I see the activity going on through the bay. And there are a lot of boats, a lot of jet skis go by there, people on paddleboard, kayaking, et cetera. And I see when the tide goes down, substantially, you know, down during certain times of the year, the jet skates or the paddleboards, you know, they can damage their equipment, their water equipment by hitting anything that's, you know, how submerged is it? How far are they going to dig down in that area? So I also like to ask the question, too, with regards to what the depth is. It says here that Alupang Bay approximately 4,000 feet offshore, because that's a 4,000 feet offshore, but it doesn't say how far down they will be going to ensure that none of the activity is disrupted or people can't, you know, utilize their water crafts enjoying that recreational area. So if you give me just a few minutes, I have a couple of questions to ask to the author of the legislation.
I will allow just a one-minute recess, Senator Taitugui. We're back in session. Senator Taitugui, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, my colleagues, for indulging me. I had a great conversation with not only the author but as well as the Oversight Chair discussing the concerns that I had. And with that being said, I won't be proffering the amendment with regards to the non-refundable as well as the concern I have with regards to removing the equipment after because it's already been addressed in the legislation with regards to CSMorland Trust to determine whether it's feasible enough to remove it or that they would have that choice to be made to GTA. Again, Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of this legislation. I'd like to thank you also, Madam Speaker, for your work in addressing a lot of these concerns and listening to those other companies on Guam to ensure that there is no, what's that? Not conflict, but monopoly, you know, with fiber optic cables. I mean, at least we have a format, you know, to start, a plan on discussing. There's going to be more, there's going to be additional discussions, Madam Speaker, as fiber optic cables are moving into this island and will go quickly when it comes to other individuals coming to our island. Because again, Guam is very strong. Its infrastructure is strong. Its rules and regulations are strong, and these companies look for that when landing their cables on this island. So, Madam Speaker, that being said, I thank you again for the opportunity, and I hope and pray that the task forces meet regularly for anything else in the future that may come about when it regards to landing stations, fiber optic cables on this island and that task force stay in place. So thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Taitugui. On Bill Number 36, Senator Duñez, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly rise in support of the substitute bill, 36-36, and I want to commend the work that you and the committee have done as the retiring speaker mentioned to improve the bill. Just wanted to make a few points. Madam Speaker, one of the, one of our regional neighbors actually has a lot to report on the value of these undersea cables and the opportunity that it brings. In my research, Singapore really is the model that we should be looking at, Madam Speaker. About 10 years ago, we all know there was a catastrophic earthquake and tsunami that happened and took out a lot of critical infrastructure in Japan. During that time, Singapore emerged to take on a lot of the responsibility and a lot of the capacity and capability for development. In that short period of time, Madam Speaker, Singapore has emerged as the third-most-robust as the third most robust data center market worldwide. Sometimes we have these comparisons between Singapore and Guam, Madam Speaker, because Singapore is unique as an island and actually has relatively the same size within tens of square miles the size of Guam. The key factors that basically have made this so incredible for them has been the ease of doing business, the political stability that exists within Singapore, the corporate tax rate that is very favorable, not so prone to natural disasters, energy and security that are likely to affect the operation of data centers. The author of the bill has explained to us the multi-million of dollars of investment that this will be just to get this done. One of the specific questions I asked during the public hearing, Madam Speaker, was, is there any issues with regard to a level playing field? Since then, I've met with multiple telecommunications companies, and they stated if they want to get into this business, they will take the same process. They will go about the same process, they will match or improve upon whatever is being offered. But now, many of them, or at least a couple of them, have said to me, this is not their business model. They have other technologies that they're incorporating, and if down the road, they feel as though the playing field is level and that they could approach CLTC and us, and they believe they would get favorable treatment. Back to Singapore, Madam Speaker. Singapore's rise comes on the back of its improved high-speed connectivity. Singapore has attracted a number of tech companies to set up data centers. Madam Speaker, this is really where the rubber hits the road, and we've been talking now since COVID and the situation with regard to our two-legged stool on our economy. We know that tourism is devastated, and now I applaud all the efforts from GVB and everyone who's really pulling hard to get us back on our feet. But we know that the Chamber of Commerce, GITA, others on numerous fiscal teams have started stepping up to the challenge of discussing economic diversity and fast-tracking it. It is not the cables' arrival and the junction box and the monitoring and maintenance of the cables that where the money is. It is everything that is around it, the data centers, the opportunities that Singapore highlights in their success over the last decade. Guam can position to be a new alternative, given one of the major factors, geopolitical and security issues in Hong Kong and Taiwan. GTA is working with Google and Facebook and others who are aware of this new cable coming into Guam. Once again, the economic diversity, the high-tech jobs. I would even say, Madam Speaker, because of the regulatory process that they have to go through to make sure this is an equal-friendly arrival, I think even the jobs it's going to create are eco-friendly. It is something that we look forward to when we know that it's, when technology and other things that just expand our horizons, companies like Amazon and others can really provide for high-wage jobs that our people can have to survive in an otherwise difficult economy. I mentioned Amazon earlier. Amazon is presently constructing and amassing a distribution center in Hawaii, resulting in the creation of significant number of new jobs and expanding the tax base as well as expanding the industrial base. In closing on this part of my support of the bill, and I have a couple of amendments to move, Madam Speaker. You know, participating in the data center growth and the undersea cables capacity that brings with it, our government needs to continue to look at opportunities and participation. We, I know it's always attractive to see what kind of revenue and resources and taxes and different things that we can get from investment. But a lot of times, it's equally important to look at what that economic opportunity and investment can bring. It's no secret that region, even though there is not the highest, high level of participation that some of our neighboring islands have, the choice to go there is not necessarily because they don't particularly want to go there, but they just know that Guam is so much more developed. Those other areas, from what I understand, basically would give it up. I'm sure they would require the regulatory issues and everything else to be to standard. But I, from what I understand, they look more to the economic growth opportunity. But companies want to come to Guam. Guam is the hub of Asia. Guam has security. Guam has the largest economy in the region. That's why Guam is the place to be. So, Madam Speaker, as I mentioned earlier, there is a couple of amendments, and I think they're, you know, as proposed by the subject matter experts, I think they're pretty much, one is just a reassurance, the other is to kind of bring uniformity. So I'll do the first one first. Madam Speaker, this is on page four, our line four, page five, and it simply goes under D, reading the current language, "Non-exclusivity and non-interference." GTA acknowledges that, and what was formerly cable easement is lined through, and the new wording is licensed property. And the purpose of this amendment, Madam Speaker, is to be consistent. There's not particularly a cable easement definition, in fact, not even one in this bill. It is more referenced to the lease, the licensing, and that, and that was the standard language when we're talking particularly about tomorrow land trust, who will be the direct beneficiary. So with that, Madam Speaker, I propose that amendment at this time, and I wanted to listen to the discussion on it. Situs Massey.
Situs Massey, Senator Duñez. On the Duñez Amendment to the bill on page five, line four, subsection D. Is there anyone who'd like to be recognized? If not, then Senator Duñez, you may close on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just want to thank my colleagues for bearing with me and understanding and seeing no problems with this amendment. Maybe this one will be a little tougher, but I think it's, I think it will be clear as I discuss it somewhat in terms of what the intention is here. So, Madam Speaker, to discuss the amendment, let's introduce it.
Just a minute, Senator. So on the First Amendment, we will vote.
Okay.
Right? So on the amendment by Senator Duñez to line four, page five, is there any objection to this amendment? Hearing and seeing no objection, amendment passes. Senator Duñez, you may proceed.
Situs Massey, Madam Speaker. And so the Second Amendment is line 17 on page five. Madam Speaker, in section three, compensation for submerged lands license agreement. This amendment expands the language within this section. So the current language, in exchange for those rights granted under submerged land license agreement for, and then "the" is lined out, up to six cable systems, and then here is the additional new language, where a cable system, in quotes, is defined as a single end-to-end undersea communications cable owned by a set of joint partners which lands in Guam. Recognizing that a cable system may either A, terminate in Guam via a single cable end, or B, transit in and out of Guam via two cable ends interconnected at a local cable landing station. A single landing fee and annual license payment would be applied to each cable system as follows. And as you know, Madam Speaker, this is the heart of what the substitute bill brought out and amendments that were made. What follows from here is the new fees, the landing fee, and the fee itself. Now, I think this, this lang, it probably would be understood, Madam Speaker, because the nature of the value of these cables is their connectivity, not their termination. And so to bring the cable in is one thing, to use it to its potential is, of course, the economic benefit. So it to ensure that we're not going to, or they don't have to, deal with the possible ambiguity of, is there another fee associated with a cable going out or the connectivity thereof? That the one-time landing fee remains a one-time landing fee, and the annual payments are the annual payments. And so that's the purpose of this amendment, is just to ensure that it's clear. Like I said, maybe without this amendment, it would be understood. I'm almost sure that every cable that lands on Guam that has its value of connectivity probably don't even pay this level of landing fee to begin with, but that it's not duplicated in terms of external use. So I look forward to the discussion on this, Madam Speaker. Situs Massey.
Situs Massey. On this amendment, line 17, page five, is there any discussion? Senator Tait, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I'm not going to stand here and claim that I'm an expert in the, when it comes to these fiber optic cables. And this section in letter B, transit in and out of cable via two cable end interconnection at a local cable landing station, has some concern. And I ask, Madam Speaker, we just take a few minutes to consult with those who are involved, with those who are experts in the field, because I don't want to see it that we can actually have two companies coming in using one cable when, when the entity, like GTA, is able to charge each company like a million dollars to utilize that cable. I mean, the whole purpose is that one cable coming in from a, from a company, let's say, I want to say Zulily, but that's, you know, or Facebook or Amazon or some of the other companies that are planning, Google, for instance. And then we have someone else from Virgin, you know, Air that is also looking at expanding into the fiber optic cables company that they come in and utilize one line, but yet GTA is charging them each individually. So, Madam Speaker, you just a few more minutes so we can just look at this and seek advice?
All right. I'll allow one minute recess. We are in recess.
Ilhaes LaTorres back from recess. Senator Sinagustian, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, while my colleagues are still doing research in reference to the amendment on Bill 3636, I ask that we recess until tomorrow at 10 o'clock and hopefully that will give sufficient time for whatever research they're doing.
Sajid Asmasi, Senator Sinagustian, we are in recess till 10 a.m. tomorrow.